Good evening and welcome. I will call to order the Yakima City Council Business Meeting for February the 18th, 2025. We'll start with roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
DCO.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here. Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Palatian Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mary Vivascas to come forward, please, for interpreter services.
Tenemos los audicolares. Si alguien necesita ayuda con la interpretación, están en la parte de atrás. Gracias.
All right. Next on the agenda is public comment. There will be 35 minutes allowed for a public comment this evening with each person receiving two and a half minutes. When you come to the, if you want to make a public comment, you haven't done this yet, you need to pick up form in the lobby and turn it into our city clerk. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and the city in which you live. Okay? The first person I have for this evening is Shelley White.
Good evening. I'm Shelley White, a lifelong Yakima resident, a mostly retired realtor, and before John, a former director of sales for the Convention Bureau under Kathy Coffey. And although I am a member of the Planning Commission, I am appearing tonight as a private citizen. Last week, Trevor Martin, senior planner, came to do a study session with you concerning land use and zoning, and he briefly touched on the new middle housing laws. I'm here to begin to give you more information on those laws, and in the future, I will return to share a series of educated opinions based on deeper research dives that I've done into those new laws and what I have come to believe are the real reasons behind them. So tonight, let me start by saying that the state has declared an official housing crisis and has set a goal of building 1 million homes by 2044. The state cites affordable and fair housing as primary motivations for these new laws, which, and who can argue with that, but they are the most sweeping land use and zoning reform laws in Washington state history. But I believe that another agenda entirely is at work here, and I feel it is imperative to wake us up. These new laws remove much local control over zoning and land use from cities and counties and seriously diminish and disregard the rights of existing landowners. Although these laws cannot be altered by this council, it is my opinion that you need to be thoroughly aware of them and their implications. The Yakima City Council previously voted to allow, and so did the state, up to two ADUs to be built on any city lot that could accommodate them, considering normal building codes. However, House bills 1110 and 1337 blow past your earlier decision and now allow four housing units per city lot in cities of Yakima's size and only partially apply current building codes and permit oversight. This means that instead of an average of five homes per acre, you now have 20 homes per acre. In fact, the new housing bills completely eliminate most single-family zoning in the majority of Washington cities and urban growth boundaries. Extreme multifamily housing is now allowed on most city lots for all new development and existing lots. So tonight, if you'd like one, I'm going to hand out packets for each of you containing the MRSC easy-to-read versions of 1110 and 1337, and I sincerely ask you to please take the time to familiarize yourself with them before I come back next week.
So Ms. White, your time is up, but we will gladly receive the packets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next is Joe Daniels.
My name is Joe Daniels. I'm a resident of Yakima, Washington. I would like to read some scriptures out of the Bible. The Lord would bring our people back home. A message from the Lord came to me. The Lord said, "Son of man, the people of Jerusalem have spoken about you. They have spoken about the others the Babylonians have taken away. They have also spoken about other people of Israel. The people of Jerusalem have said, 'Those people are far away from the Lord. This land was given to us, and it belongs to us. So tell them, the Lord and the King says, "I sent some of my people far away among the nations. I scattered them among the nations; I scattered them among the countries. But for a little while, I have been their temple in those countries where they have gone. Tell them, the Lord and the King says, "I will gather you from the nations; I will bring you back from the countries where you have been scattered. I will give you back the land of Israel. I will return it. They will remove all of the statues of evil gods. I hate those gods. I will give my people hearts that are completely committed to me. I will give them a new spirit that is faithful to me. I will remove their stubborn hearts from them, and I will give them hearts that obey me. Then they will follow my rules; they will be careful to keep my laws; they will be my people, and I will be their God. But some people have hearts that are committed to worshiping the statues of evil gods. I hate those gods. Anything that happens to those people will be their own fault, announced to the Lord and the King. The end of the tribe and spread the wings; the wheels were beside them. The glory of God of Israel was above them. The glory of the Lord went up from the city. It started above the mountain of Oli's east of the city. The Spirit of God lifted me up. She took me to those who had been brought to Babylon as prisoners. Those are the things that happened in the vision the spirits gave me. Then the vision I seen were gone. I told my people everything the Lord has shown me. The Lord has chosen to come soon. A message from the Lord came to me. The Lord said, "Son of man, you have a proverb in the land of Israel. It says, 'The days go by when not even one vision comes true.'" Tell them, the Lord and the King says, "I'm going to put an end to that proverb. They will not use that saying in Israel anymore. Tell them, 'The days are coming soon, and every vision will come true.'" There will be no more false visions. People will no longer use magic to find out whether good things are going to happen in Israel. I am the Lord, so I say what I want to, and it will come true when I want it to. In your days, I would do everything I said I will, but you people always refuse to obey me, announced to the Lord and the King. A message from the Lord came to me. The Lord said, "Son of man, Israel likes to say in the vision Ezekiel sees won't come true for many years. He is prophesying about a time that is a long way off. So tell them, the Lord and the King says, 'Everything I say will come true and would happen when I want it to, announced to the Lord and the King.'" Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Next, we have Andrew Reyes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Reyes, resident of Yakima. And today, I just wanted to approach the public regarding some reform that is heavily been weighing on my mind and particularly seems like it should be an agenda, needs to be made on, an agenda for the public. And I'm not sure about this council personally, you know, I know how you guys officially or formally address yourself as, you know, the public council per se or not, or just, you know, if you're corporate or whatever, I'm not sure. But I'm just talking publicly, you know, as private citizens regardless. So uniformly, you know, we're all just public citizens, just trying to understand the agendas and all that of the elements or whatever, sum up your element uniformly, we all do whatever, receive our intelligence. And one, and one concern is the reform to the public registries that is, needs to take place. That's definitely needs to be, I believe, the public needs to make that an agenda as well as the climate change and the evacuation orders. I know those are orders. I feel like the public should make that an agenda as well for, you know, and I'm not sure how to go about that. How does that work, you know? Where do those orders, how do those orders get put in? Would like to know if anybody has any information, just, you know, publicly, if anybody has any information on those orders or anything like that, would be nice to hear some feedback on that because it's not something very common. I realize that, but nevertheless, it's a serious matter, and everything is uniformal and diverse first, I believe, you know? So before we jump to any conclusions, you got to remain diverse always first, so, which I, you know, like to go through the channels and understand those, that diversity as well, you know, where nobody's wrong or right, you know, everybody's right in their own right first entitlement.
Your, your time is up for this evening, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, folks. Good evening.
Mr. Beeler, do we have anyone on Zoom tonight who wishes to address the council?
No, Mayor Byers, you do not.
Thank you. Then I will close the public comment section and now move into item five, which is open discussion for the good of the order. Our first presentation will be from the DYBID board, and is Ben Hiddle here?
Mm-hmm. He's back there.
Would you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ben Hiddle, Yakima resident. I'm the chair of the DYBID by election and by nomination of my fellow chairman, chair people, they, they put me as the chair since I was the new guy.
It's called railroading.
You know how that works, but.
You're a real new guy, yeah.
Real new guy. I actually, not only am I a resident, but I live downtown Yakima. I live, work, and play downtown Yakima. So I, I try and walk the walk as some, some editorials say. The, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate all of you folks' time and effort. You're sitting at city council, I sure as heck am not, and so I appreciate what you folks do, okay? And I'm here to discuss the role of the Downtown Yakima Business Improvement District. A lot of times, people throw acronyms and one out of 10 get it, but DYBID stands for Downtown Yakima Business Improve a District. I know I'm preaching to the choir here because you're city council members, but in my former occupation, we were taught not to assume things. Just a quick review, businesses within the DYBID pay an annual $100 fee on their business license. So anyone that owns a business in downtown Yakima within the DYBID district pays $100 in addition to other fees to have a business license in downtown Yakima. In addition to that, if you're a property owner, if you're a property owner with several properties or one property, you pay an assessment, a DYBID assessment, and it's on a multiplier. So for example, this is just an example, if you had a building that received a county assessment of about $950,000, you would pay roughly just under $900 BYDID fee, 890-some to be exact, but, so that along with your $100 license permit. So that's, that's kind of what different businesses are paying for fees to, to, for With, with that, I wanted to bring you up to date on some of our DYBID information that we're discussing at our, at our, we have a meeting quarterly. We try to have one every, every three months. We've also had some where we needed to talk about some more urgent issues. When we were all, when we all started this, this, when we all ran for this DYBID election, I was the new guy on the block, but we were all new people, new members on this committee. The council was new. We had a city manager going out and another city manager coming in, so we were all kind of trying to drink, we're trying to learn this information like drinking water through firehose, you know? But now we're kind of, we kind of feel like we're getting the grasp of things. We, we know where the official downtown district is, which was, I tried walking it one day with a map, and I was a downtown beat cop at one time, and I was having trouble deciphering where the DYB started and ended and that type of thing. It's not, it's not a real easy, easy thing to follow. We know who the property owners are and the business owners, the, the city, the city has provided us with updated lists that actually tell us who pays into DYBID, and, and so we have that information. We know what the DYBID's responsibilities are, and we know what DAY's responsibilities are, and I'll get to that in a second. Right now, we're currently in the act or process of getting an election going for, all of us have expired terms, and so we're trying our best to get an election off the vote. You know, we don't have, we don't have the resources to do mailers and postage, and we're, what we've, what we decided to do after speaking with City Legal is do a electronic email out to get people to vote, nominate, and, and complete this process. The nominations are due by March 7th. The election will be completed by March 28th, and then a new DYBID advisory board meeting will occur in April. It'll have quarterly meetings with DAY and city staff. We plan to address regular updates on property owners and businesses, contacts and unpaid assessments. We found when we got one list printed out that some banks had changed three, three owners before, and this is who is still built, being billed out to. And I'm, by the way, I'm not doing any finger pointing because, you know, I can't throw any rocks in my glass house, okay? But, but the point is, is things needed to be updated, and we need a little better communication. This all kind of comes back, communication is going to be a, a underlying point in a lot of things when we're talking about DAY and DYBID. George Bernard Shaw, you know, he's the, he's a much smarter person that said the biggest problem in communication is, is people thinking or assuming that it took place, right? A lot of times, it doesn't. We're going to address business owner concerns at our, at our meetings, the, of course, homeless issues, trash, trash in front of their steps, alleyways, and then every once in a while, parking comes back up. And, you know, parking grew a life of its own, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
So it's all kind of, that's kind of calmed down, but the ongoing thing is, of course, homeless, and usually it's not just homeless, it's, it's more drug addiction and aggressive, aggressive schizophrenics that are drug addicted. So homeless people in a tent, we're not usually getting that many complaints about, but having an aggressive schizophrenic out in front of your business that's scaring customers, that's a problem. And, you know, in my former occupation, I know that if people were to seek help, if you seek help from a mental health counselor or a homeless society, they're going to help you. But the people that we're coming in contact with aren't, aren't in the game of seeking help. They're, they're just doing their own thing, they're doing their narcotics, and honestly, they're probably too disabled at this point in the game to ask for help. You know, it'd be kind of like a burglary detective sitting in his office, waiting for a burglar to come in and turn himself in. It never happened with me, you know? By the way, the, the one thing I want to make sure that you understand is the downtown business owners are very supportive of DAY. Just like all of us were new when, when Kurt Wilson became executive director, he's brand new. So he steps through the door and he has fires to put out with parking and homeless and so on. And he, he at this time is, he's been there about a year and a half, and we feel as the DYBID, talking to our constituents, that he's doing a positive job. We haven't received any negative from business owners that we've heard otherwise, okay? So just so you know that. The other thing is, is I haven't, I haven't reviewed every contract by any means, but looking at bottom line numbers, I've seen that DAY is much more cost-effective on doing different projects and cleanup along with all the other garbage details and homeless issues than some of the other bids that have come across your desk. So I think, I think it still is the best bang for our buck, and they're focusing on One of, one of the things that we would like to, to try and, and promote is a, a better communication link between city staff, council, DAY, and DYBID. So by that, I mean, if there, if you folks are receiving complaints of some nature, how do we go about receiving it? How does the DYBID committee receive that complaint? How does DAY receive it? Because I know you do have a, you know, we have a very good Yakback system that works, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but somehow, if, if Councilman Brown receives a complaint about tree limbs or weeds, where was the complaint, what was the location of the complaint, and, and who, who can we send to try and remedy this? Is it in the DYBID, or is it, is it somebody calling in as, hey, the only council member I know is, is Reidy's brother, so I'm going to call, I'm going to call him. Well.
Good luck.
Yeah. No, but that's, sorry, I'm, that's just an example. But you see what I'm getting at is, is we would like to be able to, to, to at least substantiate what the complaint is and give someone a chance to resolve it. I've gotten complaints from people saying, hey, the, the city and DAY isn't shoveling my sidewalk. Well, you know what? That's, that's just an education issue. The city nor DAY shovel sidewalks. That's every property owner and resident of Yakima's responsibility to take care of their own sidewalks. But if, if we didn't know where that complaint came from, it's just somebody throwing a phone call at a council member, and so how do we resolve that, see? I do have some, I'm not here to, I'm not here to go through all of DAY's annual reports or any of that. I'm just here on behalf of DYBID, just to make sure that everybody at least knows what that acronym is today. And I do have information that Jose, one of the facility workers with the DAY, has recently obtained certification and training in weed chemicals and so, and such. So we're going to take a more aggressive act on eliminating some of these things before they happen. DAY's looking into adding a new position with the facilities to beef up. My, I don't want to, I don't like to get into storytelling, but my wife and I watch, we can watch out our front porch and watch DAY cleaning up the same mess from the same homeless person every day. And my wife's a retired CPA, CFO, and she looks at it in a column sense where, you know, if we had an actuary account on how much money the city or DAY spent just on that one person alone cleaning up his mess every day, and it takes that DAY facilities worker that much time out of his regular day that he could be doing what he's supposed to be doing, it'd be in the thousands of dollars, maybe hundreds of, she calls him the million-dollar homeless. Not that she, she doesn't do name-calling, she, I, I made that one up, but. We want to try and hold everybody accountable for using communication methods of some sort. So if we don't, if, it's like I, when I was, when I was a Yakima police officer, it would drive me crazy when people didn't report crime, and then they would complain about it. If you didn't report it, it didn't happen, you know? And so we keep pushing, see something, say something, and we'd say that to all of our neighbors, and they, a lot of times, they'll say, well, what good does it do to file a no trespass agreement? Well, you know, I was, I just got back into town about 2:00 this morning, and, and my previous road trip, I had one of my tenants say, hey, I've got somebody asleep outside my emergency exit, and I pulled up my camera system and I saw the person sleeping there. I already had a no trespass report on file, and I called YPD, and with the no trespass report on file and my live camera feed, I could, I could basically have this person removed without YPD having an issue. Otherwise, if it's private property, I've got to be there at 3:00 in the morning and say, hey, get out of here. But they have the right to move people along, not to get into, I'm sorry, Sherida, be talking With, with that, the basic, the basic update that's, that's really on the hot burner is, is we finally got this election process on the move, and, and Charlie Robin is, is my secretary, and he has, he has gotten the email mailers from the city business list and the property owner list and has, has sent it out, and he CC'd me, so, so we at least have two people on the election process. It felt a little awkward running our own election, but that's kind of the way the city ordinance has us doing it, so we're doing the best we can. In closing, I just want to, once again, I want to say that I'm not here, this isn't about any finger pointing or blame placing. It's about improving communication collaboration with DYBID so it can function as intended. Believe me, the advisory board is made up of individuals that are very invested in downtown Yakima, and we can utilize their experience for the city staff and council to bounce things off of because some of us have been there and done that. Not that we're know-alls, but we, we know, I know what doesn't work. So with that, thanks for letting us present tonight, and I entertain questions if you have some.
Questions, council? Deputy Mayor Brown?
Yeah, so I was the one who brought this forward, and it's, I mean, you mentioned complaints, but it's, I think for me, it's not necessarily the complaints, it's the, the contract that has been signed. There's a, there's a very huge list of things and scope of work that is required in the contract, and I understand it's a lot. However, there's things that just aren't getting done in the contract, and so as the facilitator of the funds of taxpayer money and you, you know, it's, I'm looking at it going, I want to make sure that business owners and you guys are getting what you're paying for and not, you know, and if that means the scope needs to change, if that means, you know, whatever, right? I mean, you have, we always have these contracts and it's, everything's in them, but then it just disappoints when you're like, well, I didn't, you know, you only did five of the 40 things or whatever. Right. That are in there, right? And so my question is, is like, are, is that something that you guys looked at, is like, is this contract too, you know, all-encompassing? Do we need to sub some of this out to other?
Well, from, from what? From what I've seen and heard, I think subbing is going to cost a lot more money than letting the guys that, that are working for DAY do the job. They need to be, they need to get trained up on, like, I think you folks get a lot of weed complaints, so right now, they're taking a proactive move to, to get Jose trained and certified, and we, we have to be a little careful about sending somebody out with weed chemicals that doesn't have a certification, but I think we're on the right step there. The, the one thing that would, thing that would really help, I feel, is if we had something similar to Yakback where if, if a business owner or, or one of your constituents has a complaint, we can at least, they, they can even be anonymous, but let's find out what, what the issue is and where, we can verify, you know, does it involve my, the DAY facilities, or should I call city street department? You know, that type of thing. So. So I think we should leave it as it is with D A Y. I seriously do. And especially with the new director giving them an opportunity to get the ball rolling. He's got people in training and he's in the act of hiring someone else at this time. Well, that's what I suggest.
The question I had for you, Mr. Hiddle, is that if the, the person who's doing the majority of maintenance work is not able to accomplish it all because there are so many distractions with other things going on, is there an opportunity to hire new staff?
Right. And I, they're, they're, they're at least, they at least have, and I'll defer to the executive director if I'm misspeaking, but I believe there's an opening to hire at least one more part-time. At this time, they have two full-time people that are, that are doing the maintenance in the downtown area. And then they're in the act of hiring another part-time person. It wasn't that many years ago, we used to have people out there with purple shirts that were called ambassadors. And we, we were a little, we were a little fatter, but you know, Y P D used to have 135 cops too, you know? So back when, never mind.
Hey, we do again.
We do. Any other questions by council or comments?
Well, I, I just, I guess for me is looking back at the contract, all of those things are still in the contract. The ambassador program is in the contract, pressure washing the sidewalks, that's not something that's been a request, that's something that's part of the maintenance. And, and so that's kind of where I'm like, as that contract keeps, you know, I'm going, is the scope too large? And if it is, then we need to probably change that.
I, and, you know, I agree. I think if, if it is too large, we need to narrow it down to the priorities. As a, as a business owner, I didn't think that, that D A Y, you know, I own my own pressure washer, but I know that not everybody has one. But I thought that D A Y did pressure washing upon request if somebody had something dumped on their sidewalk. So I'm, I might be misspoken because I haven't read that part of the contract, okay? So.
Would you like me to speak to somebody else?
Sure, I don't care. Yeah.
That's fine. Mr. Wilson?
Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you, Ben, for that. I think some of the questions you're asking are fair. Some of them are, I don't necessarily know that are fair. So we have a contract that is through 2028. So the council saw a fit to go out and get proposals and bids. And as far as I can tell, those bids all came in at a minimum of $25,000 over what we're, what you're currently paying the downtown business, or downtown association. So by, by my numbers, $25,355,000 over, $120,000 over. And if the city was to absorb it, $48,600 over, which to me, in a, in a time where you're looking at numbers, seems to, and I get your point, if things aren't getting done, then what are you paying for? But when I read this contract and I see things in there written that say hotspot pressure washing, that doesn't mean pressure washing gets done every day. That means pressure washing gets done when we receive complaints and we have hot spots and may have issues. So I guess to Ben's point earlier and a point that I've brought up when I've had an opportunity to address council, is that specifics on what isn't getting done versus blanket statements about the contract itself not being fulfilled. Because I think what Ben was trying to communicate is that the downtown business improvement district seems to think that they are getting the services that they're paying for, but I feel like council is making statements that, that would, would suggest that they're hearing complaints, but I'm not receiving those directly. So both the business, the operations manager, Jose, that Ben alluded to earlier, and myself, our, our phone numbers, our emails are published, we have Yak Back, we are getting those things when they come to us, we're addressing them. So unless there's other things that I'm not seeing, which I'd be happy to sit down with you, Matt, and talk about those specific things.
I guess I'm just.
So that we can, so that we can ensure that we're fulfilling this contract. But right now we're $30,000 at least upside down the contract through 2028, which was negotiated before I got here. So we're doing the best we can with the resources we have and we're then going to take more funds from the, from the association to enhance our ability to maintain that contract by adding more bodies. And more bodies are not getting cheaper, they're getting more expensive with state laws and around, around paid, what's the word I'm looking for? Hourly versus salary position. So it's getting more difficult with inflation and those things to fulfill that contract. So if you want to sit down and look at it in specifics, you and I can meet and we'll sit down and talk about it specifically and, and figure out how to address it and see if there is scope that can be changed.
Do you have a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you have a volunteer squad or anything, volunteers that can help with some of the?
We have a, we have a group of folks actually there, they, what are they? Arizona Grand Canyon University who's offered to help us out a little bit. So we're in conversations with them. I actually, some of the things that, the talking points I had were literally about getting out a schedule to our downtown business improvement district. I've talked to Jose about that in terms of where we'll be, when we'll be there and what treatment we're providing as far as weeds go. Obviously these other things, graffiti, garbage, things like that are things that come up. We want to make sure that they understand that the, the boundaries. We oftentimes are receiving calls from people who, and again, I'm not here to finger point, I'm just stating facts, these are facts. Fact is, we get a call, and I've mentioned these things to city staff, from people outside the district that the city pointed them to collect a day because that's a day issue. We look on the boundaries, first thing I do is go to boundaries and I say, I'm sorry, you're actually not in the downtown business improvement district. So I'm sorry to have to bounce you back to the city, but that's a, that's clean city Yakima that's responsible for that. Now, so that's, to me, that's a training issue, that's just an understanding issue, but it's not just the city's job to make sure that that happens, it's also downtown association job. So as Ben alluded to, I'm trying to put systems in place and campaigns in place where we can speak to these people, but we need good lists from the city. We need to know who's paying in, make sure that we're not, they're not behind. We need the contact information for those, those places so that we can send out and let them know specifically, this is what the boundaries, this is what day is offering, this is what our contract is. These are things that are in that contract that you should be holding us accountable on, so.
Sounds like communication is the key.
Thank you. Yeah.
I, I think that if any one of us as council receive a phone call from a business that's saying, this is not being done, that we should immediately refer them to you.
If it's, if it's in the downtown business improvement district.
You can, you can decide that when you get the phone call. Is that fair?
It would be helpful if, if it was somebody on the other end was also able to decide that. You know, I don't, it's just time on our staff, we're already talking about limited time and resources. I get that you guys also have limited time and resources, but that seems to me like a simple training issue of looking at the map and saying, what's your address? And that you guys can do that as well as I can, as well as my staff.
We don't want to bump people around, you know?
We could have one person in the city who might be designated to do that if we get a call. Possibly. Thank you. Go ahead.
So Kurt, just, just so you know, I'm not trying to nitpick on this contract aspect. What I'm looking at is, when I, when I requested those quotes, it was on, on a purposeful standpoint because I knew we couldn't get it cheaper, right? But I also knew the scope seems absurd to have some of these things. And so I'm giving the opportunity multiple times now for you to say, listen, I think this scope actually needs to change because we can't provide these services at this rate, right? And so when we, when we talk about taxpayers and actually paying for this service or business owners paying for these things, and they see the contract and they see what services they're supposed to get, this is an ongoing maintenance contract, not something that's by request. It's an ongoing maintenance contract. They expect something, whether it's right to expect it or not, is another thing, but they expect it. And so I'm going, well, maybe that scope is just too broad, right? Maybe we need to be more specific, right? Maybe it's weeds, maybe it's garbage pickup, maybe it's, you know, these type of things that is in your wheelhouse to accomplish, right? That would be my only thought on this whole process is like, I want to make sure that we're not over committing to the business owners that are paying this and that you guys can deliver on, on that with the money that's being provided. So that, that was kind of my point, right? And if it's, well, no, we can't, we can't, we can't do this, like the ambassador program, we can't do this, we can't do this. Okay, well then let's, let's change those things.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
Anyways, that, that was my, my only thought behind it has been just trying to make sure that this contract actually fits and that people actually know what to expect.
And I think those are fair questions and I, I think perception is reality, right? So if the perception is we get these things and we're not, then, then you're just not getting them, right? But if, if the reality is that they're actually not in the scope. So I appreciate the clarity. I guess I'm taking your opportunities today to kind of talk about that and I'm taking you up on your offer to, if you want to look at the scope of work.
Let's do it.
And we want to, and we want to thin it out, then let's do it, you know? Because again, it is, I think scope is interesting in that you get into a wall and all of a sudden you find you have termites, the scope just changed, right? Well, we've got termites, we've got issues in downtown and scope is changing, you know? And so when this contract was negotiated, we probably didn't have some of the homeless situation we have now and, and some of the regular players downtown, so.
Right.
Okay. Anyway, thanks for letting me fill a bus.
Thank you.
Ben, anytime you get a chance to interrupt, Ben, you should take it.
At the end of the day, isn't it better just to have your two organizations work things out to your satisfaction and not be making the decision from the city council level?
And I think that Ben and I talk all the time about the, the contract and, and my, my understanding is that, as you said, that people are happy, but until we have actionable items, I can't do much about those things. And, you know, again, and if for me, you know, without excuse, I can no longer use the new card. I've been here longer than a year and a half and I feel like I've got a pretty good bead on some things. There's still always learning, always room for growth. But I will say that what I do know is that there's, there, it's, we have a broad, big area to take care of and we have an ongoing issue with it getting dirty and weeds in Yakima. Things grow in Yakima, I can tell you that. So that's, those things aren't going to go away. So we, I appreciate the opportunity to sit down and talk about them some more and, and if that's all you were asking, you could have just called me and said, hey, let's talk about the scope, you know? So, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Anything else towards D Y B I D?
How many businesses are under your umbrella?
There's 265.
Two six five.
265 business licenses.
Okay.
And I don't have a current, I don't have a current count of buildings, building numbers, but.
For the assessment piece?
Right.
Okay.
That's the, see, and that's, since we started, we, those were things that we didn't have from the get-go is, you know, how much money do, are we bringing in? And what businesses are being assessed and what buildings are or are not being assessed? So there are all these unknown variables that we had that we're trying to play catch up on. And with the help of city finance and so on, we're getting closer to our answer, but like, what, what about businesses that are in the rears? And, and how do, how do, what, what is imposed upon them if they aren't paying? And those kind of questions that are for another meeting at another time, sidebar type. But you see, we're trying to play catch up and, and with that, I don't have that exact number.
Right.
But, but at least I can give you the point 00096.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hiddle. Appreciate that.
I appreciate a couple of things. I appreciate you guys coming back to the table with this. I also appreciate that, about the weed aspect, that, that is something that I have received. I do try to walk and talk to business owners on a continuous basis down here and that has been the constant. And so I do appreciate those, those things being addressed. It's, you know, and it's not just, the city has also paid money to address those over the last three years to try to supplement. And so that's, that's my other reasoning by bringing this was like, look, we're already, there's already money dedicated to this, we shouldn't be increasing more money towards doing weed abatement.
Right.
So that, anyways, for full context, that's, that's my brain and how we're, I'm just trying to make sure the money is being used correctly and make sure the scope is adequate. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move ahead on the agenda, item eight, because it's after six o'clock and we have a public hearing we need to do this evening. So we're going to eight A, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the amended six-year transportation improvement program for the period of 25 through 2030 and to amend the transport systems plan until 2040. And then second resolution amending Yakima urban area comprehensive plan capital facilities. So our city community services director, Bill Prescott, is here to talk to us.
Good evening, mayor, council. So as I've been before you before, two weeks ago actually, on this very same topic, a different project. So before you is actually a project that's been around a long time, our Nob Hill and Fair Avenue intersection improvements. The only reason this is before you is because the original plan was to obligate this money and, and begin construction last year. Unfortunately, we didn't get through the right of way process quite in time and when we updated our six-year tip, it fell off the list because we did it before we didn't make it, if that makes sense. So it is a requirement that the project be on the six-year transportation improvement plan. And so we needed to put it back on so that now we can go to add now. We have cleared right of way, so the plan is to do that in the next month or so. So, any questions?
Any questions by council?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing portion of this. Do we have anyone in the room who wishes to address the council this evening about the work being planned for the Fair Avenue and, also it's Nob Hill Boulevard? All right. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone online who'd like to address the council in this public hearing this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there's none.
All right, thank you. So I will close the public hearing. Leave it, discussion or motion from the council?
Do we need to read the resolutions?
We do. There's two of them actually, both resolutions.
The first is a resolution amending the adopted six-year transportation improvement program for the period of 2025 through 2030 and amending the transportation systems plan 2040. The second is a resolution amending the Yakima urban area comprehensive plan capital facilities element to incorporate the amended six-year transportation improvement program for the period of 2025 through 2030.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt both resolutions.
Second.
So we have a motion by council and D C O and a second by deputy mayor Brown to adopt both resolutions. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
D C O?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, excuse me, both resolutions are adopted. Thank you, council. We'll now go back to our plan for round.
Five B.
We've already scheduled.
And he's out.
Next on the agenda is item five B, which is Yakima Valley Tourism. And Mr. John Cooper is going to present to the council.
He was just there.
He's right there.
Mr. John Cooper is going to present to the council.
Yucking it up.
You almost missed your opportunity, Mr. Cooper.
I'm sorry.
It's great when you have a short hearing, I guess. Hello, everybody, I'm John Cooper with Yakima Valley Tourism and I know you've got a lot more on your agenda and I was asked to keep it fairly succinct tonight, so I just thought I'd do a quick review of some of the things that happened in 2024, as well as what we're up to in 2025 for tourism. This is the wrong PowerPoint.
Okay.
This is a different one.
Yeah, it's up.
And not quite sure how this was even sent. So.
Because we have the annual report.
The annual report, yeah. And in your packet is the images that were related to that, as well as, I have the actual one, so I'll just go through that without advancing the screen. The data that's in your packet shows, and I'll read for the public, that visitors to Yakima County, the data that we get is on a county basis. And so therefore, I don't have it divided out just for Yakima, but in total, visitors spend about almost $400 million each year. They generate more than $51 million in taxes and they support 5,100 jobs. And what's great about the taxes is the taxes go to help cover public services we all enjoy. It helps to fund our parks, our police and our roads. And if it, and one of the great things about the taxes generated by visitors is that they're temporary taxpayers. They come, they enjoy our community, they infuse money into the community, but they don't require a lot of services. And the taxes that are saved for all of our residents in the county is about $450 by the spending by visitors. Also in your packet, we talk about specific items. Ah, it is up there. It doesn't match what's on the screen, so.
Market is a great place for people, especially folks who have relocated here. We found that a number of folks go to the market to get a pulse of what's happening in the community and they they love to get our information for visiting friends and family.
I'll just maybe some time to, I think I saw the Restaurant Week, something posted on about?
Yes, okay, so the Chamber of Commerce is leading an effort, again, they've done it for a number of years and they've expanded efforts to include the various organizations, including the Downtown Association, CILA, Union Gap, ourselves, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, to get more restaurants involved in Restaurant Week and all the offerings that are coming up. I can't remember the exact dates, but it's going to be around mid-March.
Lots to good eat. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you also for bringing the Ambassador Program in. I think for almost any business or organization or agency in our city, it's a great way to go.
It's a great program, so thank you.
All right, counsel?
I want to know about the funding bills I have.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is council reports. I don't believe we have any this evening, maybe? All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. So items listed are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does any person have an item they wish to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing that, Clark, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Item A, approval of minutes from the February 4th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting and February 11th, 2025 City Council Study Session. Item B, set date of March 18th, 2025 as the date for a closed-record public hearing to consider the Yakima Planning Commission's recommendation on a rezone request, RZ number 005-24, for six parcels located at 103, 105, 107 North 40th Avenue and 3902 Summit View Avenue. Item C, January 2025 Investment Transaction Report. Item D, approved payment of dispersments for the period January 1 through 31 of 2025. Item E, a resolution accepting and approving the fourth quarter 2024 Claim Report for the City of Yakima. Item F, a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the 2025 and 2026 airport rates and fees to add fees for the conference room, administrative office, and equipment usage to within the master fee schedule in line with Resolution R 2024-191. Item G, a resolution authorizing an enterprise license agreement for the sole source purchase of geographic information systems, GIS, technology with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., ESRI. Item H, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Granicus for smart gov services. Item I, a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement four with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying, Inc., providing professional services for the 72nd Avenue and West Washington Avenue Roundabout Project 2517. Item J, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a right-of-way use permit to allow a metal awning and commercial exhaust hood at 31 North Front Street. Item K, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a right-of-way use permit to allow stairs and landing and fencing and gate on the west side of the building at 303 East D Street. Item L, a resolution authorizing the execution of a software-as-a-service, SaaS, agreement for the sole source purchase of a badge application processing software from Airbadge LLC. Item M, a resolution awarding of RFP 12412P and authorizing an agreement with Country Garden Nursery LLC for the Downtown Flower Program. And item N, an ordinance relating to the telecommunications system franchise granted to Wholesale Networks LLC and Zipley Fiber as originally granted under City of Yakima Ordinance Number 2015-045 and approving a transaction under which control of Wholesale Networks LLC and Zipley Fiber will be transferred to BCE Holding Corporation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I approve, uh, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Deceo and a second by Councilwoman Herrera to approve the consent agenda as read. And we will need probably a roll call on this, please.
Byers?
Yes.
Deceo?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, um, excuse me, seven zero, and all ordinances are passed and resolutions are adopted. Thank you very much. We're going to move down now to item nine, which is department items. Item A is an overview of the city's policy regarding traffic calming and our Community Development Director, Mr. Preston, is back before us again.
Well, good evening again. This time I get to stay a little bit longer. So, uh, I think we mentioned this last week, that I was going to be before you, uh, either last week or two weeks ago, I can't remember which, discussing the city's traffic calming program. And I don't have a mouse. Just like, does this work? I'll find out. So, um, so this is the same, uh, uh, close to the same presentation that I presented about two years ago. Some of you may remember that. So much of this is going to look the same, however, I have updated the data and then tried to clarify some of the other issues that I've heard over the last couple of years and hopefully this will, this will help. So, so this is a picture of the city's traffic calming webpage. So this is on the Traffic and Streets site and this outlines all of the requirements for the city's traffic calming program. I will go through all of those here in a minute. Now, look at that. So right now we have, um, two staff that are, I won't say dedicated to this, but who do work on this. So Robert Washabaugh is our Senior Traffic Engineer and then Alex, and I don't even try to say that. Alex is my Transportation Tech Two. He's okay with me not trying to pronounce it. So they do primarily all of the work associated with, um, this traffic calming, short of actually doing the installation. Okay. So on that page, there is a list of, um, different requirements and the process that we go through. Those, that process includes a resident request, an initial review of the site. This step is essentially never done. Everybody just leaps right to step number two, which is a resident petition to study traffic calming measures. So, and I'll show you the petition here in a minute. So we get that petition in. It requires a 30% of the, uh, area residents, uh, residents, not owners, but residents, to sign that before we would look at it. And then we, uh, we do that petition, we start doing some preliminary measures. If there is, uh, traffic calming measures that could be or should be taken, uh, we would move into the plan development stage. This is where we do the education, um, enforcement and, and, and finally the engineering piece of it. Uh, and then after it's done, or I'm sorry, before we actually do any work, there is a requirement that we then need to confirm that we still have support. And so that is a open, uh, public meeting with the residents and that requires, I think it's 66%, so two-thirds, um, of the residents to say, hey, we should move forward with that improvement. So then we would move into, okay, so now this is the design, if there is a design, and then the actual construction part of it. We do monitor it, so I will touch on some of the, uh, elements that we do during the evaluation and so we can compare the before and afters, right? So that's what we're trying to do. And that includes some of the cut through, uh, pass-through, uh, traffic that might be there. So we look at, we look at some of that. And then finally, we do a follow-up evaluation to, to see if they are warranted, are still warranted, or, um, did it do what we wanted it to and that kind of thing. So this map, there is an interactive map, um, on the city's Traffic and Streets webpage. Uh, and this is just, we keep it relatively current, um, as much as we can and it kind of gives an idea of what's going on and, and the status of some of those traffic calming petitions that we may have received. Okay, so here's that petition I was talking about. So, um, uh, Robert will receive these, uh, either email or hard copies, um, and then he will put them in his queue and start to work on those. So in 2023, since it's been two years since I, since I did this, uh, in 2023, we did, we had three new traffic calming petitions come in. Before I go any further, I just want to point out, we also had some still in the queue. So the numbers are going to look kind of weird, but hey, that's engineering, right? And then in 2024, we had five traffic calming petitions come in. And we were able to close four of those. And we have currently 12 in the queue that are in various stages of, uh, review and/or implementation. So I'm going to go through, this is the criteria. This is what I didn't really go into too much depth, um, the last time, and so I wanted to kind of go through this a little bit more. So first of all, traffic calming is for local roads only. It's not something that we put on arterials. So arterials, um, I pulled off some, some data and some, um, kind of information, but collectors, we, in this, in the city, we call them collector arterials. Um, we have minor arterials, principal arterials, and we even have interstates that go through our city, right? And, uh, traffic calming devices are not, um, typically put on arterials for some obvious reasons, but, um, just to kind of go through it real quick is, you know, an arterial is to convey traffic from one point to another or to collect traffic. So it's, it's generally speaking, traffic with a volume of over a thousand vehicles per day. That's our ADT. Local roads typically are going to fall, um, under that or even well under that, um, traffic threshold, uh, as we go through those. I, I will note that as a city grows, our streets grow, right? And so we have these houses or residents along some of these roads who didn't start out as a arterial, but because of the traffic flow, the traffic patterns, the way the roads connect to each other and that thing, they become arterials, right? So for example, we have houses on Nob Hill and on 40th and on some of you, but those are arterials. So we wouldn't look at putting, uh, traffic calming, uh, measures in place there. Uh, and then we also have to take into account the emergency routes or emergency access vehicles as well.
Do you consider, um, the roundabouts, uh, traffic calming?
They can. It depends on how they're used and where they're used and what we're trying to, to do. Not typically, though. Not typically. I think other communities have in some of their more residential roads. I think one of the things that can happen if you put a roundabout in, in say, a residential area that is seeing some, uh, an increase in pass-through traffic, what you do is it's whack-a-mole, right? We're just moving it to another, uh, to another street. So we have to watch and, and see how that all plays out. So did that answer your question? Okay.
Do you consider, like, creating a different speed zone, a traffic calming measure? Or is this all about the, the speed bumps?
Oh, no, it's not all. It's, it's so, like I said, it's, it's education, enforcement, and engineering. So different speed zones would be engineering, right? So the answer is yes, I would consider that. Okay, so one of the key things, and this is what everybody kind of keyed on last, uh, time, was that this 85th percentile speed, it's one of the driving, um, factors in what we evaluate through here. And that is the speed at which, um, 85% of all vehicles are observed to be tra, or I'm sorry, the, the speed at which or below 85% of all the vehicles observed are traveling under free-flowing conditions. So this is, 85% of the traffic is going this speed or less, okay? And when you look at the data, which I'm going to show you here in a minute, um, you'll see that, um, how that, how that plays out. Um, one of the things I, I failed to mention was that, um, after the last time I gave this presentation, also, the Bike-Ped Advisory Committee, um, shared with, uh, me some traffic calming measures that they, uh, thought should be included in this. And what's interesting is, as I evaluate their list versus what I'm going to show you here, they're very similar. There, we're already essentially doing that. So for example, on this one, um, when we talk about, okay, so, yeah, so when we talk about the, the zero to five miles an hour over the speed limit, right? So we're collecting the traffic data and the speed and the ADT, which is all on their list here. So our current program says that, uh, zero to five, we wouldn't do anything, right? It's within five miles an hour. Five to 10 is, this is where we're looking at enforcement and, um, education. And this is primarily what we're finding, those locations that have, uh, some merit tend to fall in this range right here. And so we, uh, forward the information on, to YPD if necessary, and then, uh, we do any education or, uh, other measures that might seem appropriate at the time. And education may be the, your speed is sign, right? We're educating the traffic that they're doing 58 in a 20, right? That's what we're trying to point out.
Sounds like mainstream.
So, don't, don't laugh. You're going to see, you're going to, you're going to see that number later. Oh, what happened? Oh, there we are. Okay. So, um, and then we have those locations that are over 10 miles an hour, um, and those are where we look at edu, uh, engineering, um, and that's where we would look at some speed bumps or, uh, maybe traffic, you know, roundabouts or, um, other measures, assigning or some other things that might, might come into play here. So I want to make sure I capture some of the, the things that the Bike-Ped Committee, uh, mentioned because I told them last week that I would do that. So, so if they're watching, I want to make sure they, they hear all this. So we also, uh, grabbed a three-year collision history and that again is accident data reports and other relevant reports. So we're pulling that data so that, uh, we have that information to make an informed decision and you're going to see where that comes into play as well, um, which hadn't happened, uh, previously. We are looking at, um, the cut-through traffic. So this is what I talked about a little bit earlier, where the, uh, basically Robert takes a look at, uh, the split of how, where traffic is going and how it's moving to determine, okay, does this make sense? This looks like, okay, these aren't the local residents that are using this road. And so he takes some preliminary numbers and then some post-numbers if necessary to kind of see what's going on. Uh, especially, that becomes especially important when we are going to put something in place so that we can see, you know, are we just whacking the mole and moving it to a different street or something like that? And again, extent of cut-through traffic is right here on VPAC's list. And then finally, um, you know, it's not a transit route or a critical emergency route. I kind of touched base, uh, a little bit earlier when I talked about the arterials and the importance of those. And again, status of each street is an emergency vehicle, bike, or truck route. One thing that's not on here, but that is, um, important is when we set out our counters, we also take a look at where that is at, right? We don't put the location of our counters and our traffic measuring devices near the intersections, right? We do them as much to, as close to mid-block as we can, figuring that theoretically they're not doing 58 as they approach the stop sign. They're kind of doing that, um, further, further on. So, so again, that's one of the things that we address and, and that was something that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee asked, um, us to, to consider. So that's our current, like, data gathering process. So here's the numbers for the last three years. I don't know, oh, go ahead.
Do you find that enforcement, I mean, people are creatures of habit, right? I mean, it, you do a thing over and over again, same, I mean, I know, like, on Chestnut, there was a huge issue of speeding going up there, but that ended up, it's another issue. But I'm just wondering, is like, do you feel like enforcement actually functions because it, we have to be there so long? To change behavior, I guess, is my only thought.
Yeah, um, I think, you know, YPD would be a little bit, uh, more appropriate to answer that question, but from, from the engineering side of the equation, uh, the, yes, I mean, in short, I think it does. The problem is it's typically short duration, right? And so it, it's, it's an effort that, that is very difficult to continue, um, because, you know, YPD gets pulled off to different locations as well. However, it also provides the education piece of that to remind people that, um, they shouldn't be doing it. Now, when we look at these numbers, what you'll find, oh, wait a minute, I had some, I had some bullets here. There we go, look at this. So here's the list. I didn't do this, somebody else did this. So, um, zero, so of this list, there's actually 13 of them on this list here, but seven out of those 13, um, were going less than five mile an hour above it. So what I'm looking at is that 85% speed column. Uh, so you can see, um, you see that information there. So, there we go. Five to 10 miles an hour, six out of the 13, and so those are basically the shaded, uh, ones that we have there in that column. And then, um, we have one, which is that 12th Avenue, which is the last red one there, uh, the, yeah, under the in-progress, it's the, it's the last one there. That's actually 11 miles an hour. So, um, the, the orange or whatever color that is, uh, those are ones that we are looking at education and enforcement on, and so we have forwarded those on to YPD and so they will be making, you know, and doing some, uh, enforcement efforts along there and/or we're putting some signs in and whatnot. Um, the two red ones are kind of unique. So the one on 12th Avenue, that one does warrant, uh, based on our, our criteria, um, some engineered, uh, traffic calming, and that is probably going to be some speed bumps. However, we can't do it at this time of year, right? So we've got to, um, wait for the weather to get, get to get better and we'll get those out here, uh, when, when appropriate. Now, what I talked about earlier was the accidents, right? So on the 10th Avenue, we have, uh, it's only nine, nine over, but it does meet the accident criteria. So we are going to put some, uh, traffic calming devices in there. So this is one of those where our traffic calming, uh, procedure and plan, uh, utilizes all of its tools to actually, um, suggest the right things to do.
So the 85% column, that means, so if there's 27, that means 27 cars? No.
No. That, that is speed. So what that means is that the 85% of the vehicles are going 27 or less. So when you look at that, so on, uh, Chestnut, that's only, that's seven miles an hour over the speed limit.
Right.
Okay? So, um, so that's...
Have a 20 mile an hour speed limit.
Right, right. But what the, the exciting column that everybody usually looks at is, well, look at the maximum speed, you know, 57, 62, 98.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we're not, we're not saying that people aren't speeding on some of these roads. What we're saying is they're not, it's not 85% of the people, right? And that's what the data is showing. Um, and when you look at the percent over the speed limit, um, that's kind of a, a weird column and it's just saying that... I don't even know how to say it. Well, we can talk about it later, if you, if you want. So this, this is the current system or current data from where we're at. And so those new requests are the four that, uh, we will take some traffic counts once the weather clears and it's more representative of actually what's happening out there. So, moving on, I'm almost done here. Moving on, there we go. So, um, wanted to touch on the, the, the costs associated with this. So currently we have $30,000 set aside and that's all coming out of REIT, uh, to, to do this work. In 2023, we spent $26,000 on some new radar speed signs. That's how we were able to get caught up and some of that is some repairs and some other issues that we, we, we had with those. Um, and then, uh, in 2024 was another 21,000. These numbers are for equipment and materials only. So the labor is not in those, so there is some labor that's associated with this that is not included in those numbers, um, as, as well. So...
So you're buying new signs every time?
I'm sorry?
You're buying new signs every?
No, 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 no. No, this is, so, so if we needed, we needed some new radar speed signs. So, um, we bought some, put them up, they replaced some other ones or the, and then I know our, um, our radar guns themselves or those devices, they actually failed rarely, fairly quickly, and so we had to get some, do some repairs for those. And like the RRFB signs at 40th and Chestnut, I think I mentioned a while back that we were going to do some advanced wording at the crossing at 40th and Chestnut. That's where, what this is. Um, the green paint that I'm going to share with you a little bit about in my SIP presentation following, um, was bought out of this as well. So that's, it's just an assortment of things that might be, um, done. And then any speed bumps or bumps that we do put in will be paid for out of the 2025 set aside.
How often do you have, because I know, I think it was on Inglewood, that they decided they didn't want their speed bumps after they were installed. How often does that happen and who pays for that?
So, um, those were installed and removed before I was here.
Okay.
So I will say it's not happened since I was here. That's as best I can answer that. All right. Oh, look at that, I'm done.
Questions by counsel?
So your, your budget for 30,000 every year is not for how much traffic calming you get done, per se? It's for the, I mean, it looks like it was used for equipment and I guess some of it was evaluating requests. I'm just trying to think of like, if you max your 30,000 budget out, is there a way for the public to still do traffic calming? Like if they bring in the request and they're like, we'll pay for it?
So first of all, I'll say is, we, we, we haven't installed any. I mean, we've, we've done some of those education and enforcement pieces, but we haven't had to install any. These will be the first ones that we've done. So right now, the expenses have gone towards making sure that we have a consistent system, we have reliable data, and that we are doing things in a manner that follows our, our policy. So if any money in '23 and '24 that didn't get spent, that goes to REIT, so that stays in the REIT account. And so now, here we are this year, right? So currently, if I install the, uh, the traffic calming measures that, that look like they're going to be installed, um, if I run out of money, then we would continue to take the peti, take the petitions in, we would evaluate them and, uh, probably wait till next year before we had additional funds.
Is there a way for them to buy it? Like if it's found, like, so it's, I, I, we get this a lot, probably, I, I, at least I do, is, well, I'll just buy the speed bumps, you know, if it's found that way. Well, all the neighbors will go in, we'll just get it done, you know?
Not really. Um, it's, yeah, it, there, there's a whole bunch of, um, one, it's got to meet all the criteria and all of those kinds of things, which...
You can't just give them a bill.
Well, well, but we can't let them put something that doesn't already meet the criteria. And then we also have to look at, uh, the, I don't know if it's fairness or exactly what it's called, um, but it's letting somebody who can afford it put something in when somebody who can't, we don't let, we don't put it in, right? I don't know exactly how, I don't know the legal piece of that. Some of it falls into there.
But if, if you guys installed it and they paid for it, then they would know that it was in done, you would know it was done correctly. I mean, you, you could do that or not?
That's what I'm asking. I'm like, I get that they're not going to know how to put speed bumps in. I'm, I'm not asking them to know that, but if they're like, right, if they're...
If traffic calming measures are required, the city would do it. It's our right of way, it's our facility, we would do it. How we would work through the pay-in and all that, you know, we, we, we'd figure that out. But I think the important thing is they're not meeting the criteria in the locations where I'm being asked, can we pay for it? And I say no, because they don't meet the criteria.
Right. I'm, I'm throwing out a, a hypothetical. I'm just asking if, if it did meet the criteria and you're like, yeah, but our budget is spent, so you're going to have to wait till 2020... so you're going to have to wait till 2027, when we have money again, they're going to be like, well, how much is it? I'll just pay it.
How much is the average?
Is that possible?
How much is the average speed bump?
I think it's, well, I haven't put any in, but I think it's around, but I think it's around five thousand, give or take.
I was going to say that, when the Inglewood thing happened, that, that's about what it was.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, it might have gone up a little bit, but it's give or take, it's probably around there. I mean, I don't have a great answer, right, off the top. I think it would be difficult to have them pay for it. I'm not sure how that would work.
Well, they just write a check to the city, goes into the general fund, and then, wouldn't that help, we have work, they certainly want to donate money to the city? If it met all the criteria, passed all the tasks...
I don't know how it works, that's why I'm asking the question. I, I, I just, I...
I don't either.
I get, I'll get asked the question, so that's what I know.
We could take back the question. I, I don't know the answer either.
I know we're not a charity, and I, you know, we're not a nonprofit, so I get that.
They couldn't write it off, it might be worth it to them to pay for it from their house, if it qualifies, right?
And I don't want to say we can or we can't, I, you're, you're somewhat outside my...
Our city attorney will come back with that answer.
But you're right about that, some people not being able to afford it, and, you know, it, it looks bad.
Right.
So...
Okay, are we moving on to the next item, Mr. Preston?
I'm, I'm good.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda is item nine B, which is 2024 update on capital improvements projects.
All right, so, this is my favorite stuff. So before we get started, I got something for you.
Oh, good.
Okay.
All right, it's kind of cheesy, but I'm gonna do it anyways.
I saw the bag.
Yeah, everybody at the table gets one, sorry, I mean, it's, you're not, you're not special. So...
Thank you.
I don't know if I should talk now, because it might not catch me on, on mic, or whatever.
Thank you.
But, obviously, this was Valentine's Day, or was very recently, right?
Yeah.
And so...
I didn't even know they were making those anymore.
Thinking, as I'm putting together this presentation...
How much do I owe you for them?
Oh, no, it's charity. I got to thinking that, that, you know, projects are a lot like relationships, and they takes planning, it takes commitment, and it takes an investment. And I'm like, huh, I wonder how that could work its way into this presentation? So I'd like to say it accidentally made its way into the presentation, but, you know, I write my own material, so this is my own doing. But this is my annual capital improvement projects program update to county, city council. So this is going to go through everything that we did last year, and what we're doing right now, and then what we're going to do in the future. So feel free to eat those, you won't bother me. So, I'll let, where'd my thing go? Okay. All right. So, as we start, you know, when projects are complete, you know, we're living happily ever after, right? That's kind of the way it feels, at least it does to me, when I can write a, a project off into the sunset. So, we did four or five last year. So the first one is the Cowichy Canyon Trail, and so we've, we've talked quite a bit about this in the past. And so this was done, finished for about 2.7 million of construction funds by Bell Sauce and Smith Construction, and is currently under operation, and, well, working well. So this is Russell Lane. Russell Lane is the intersection across from Grocery Outlet and Home Depot. Oh, look at that, I got that in the picture, huh, it was an accident. But basically, it adds that fourth leg intersection there, which wasn't there before, it was a T-intersection, and it was offset. Working with the developers, they are actually, and the seed board, they actually got a seed application through there, and so we entered into a developer agreement with them. So they are covering the costs of the city portion of this seed project. So Knobla Electric did this for 584, and I think it's been a pretty good improvement at that, that particular intersection. Nob Hill Boulevard, Fourth to Fifteenth, so I feel sorry for everybody on Nob Hill, I've been tearing that thing up every other year, and so we did again last year, from Fourth to Fifteenth, we did another mill and fill, and I thought it turned, it turned out great, looks very good, minus the water line explosion that happened. So, but other than that, it went, it was a very clean and, uh, nice project. I will point out that through these projects, I'm doing a lot of ADA work as well, and so this one happened to have, I think, nineteen ADA ramps that went on it as well. And we're going to talk about the next section of Nob Hill, coming up. Okay, and then we have the Second Street sidewalks right out here, so...
Yeah, that project, forever.
Making, not all projects are quick, you know, hey.
Almost took us long enough.
Sometimes you have to cultivate a relationship, right, to get all the way to the end. That's what this one felt like. So as you can see, it's, Knobla Electric did this for 230 out of REIT, it did, it did help with the aesthetics of that, bringing it up kind of with the rest of the city around the area, and then removing and addressing some of the trips and fall hazards that might have been associated with that location. Okay, and then I talked about green paint, and on your black and white, you might not see it as green, but here it is. Bike Ped has been after me to get some green paint down, and so we were finally able to do that. We didn't put it down in the snow, by the way, but we did forget to take pictures, so that's when we got the pictures. This is an acceptable pattern for a bike crossing. We chose this pattern because we were trying to stretch this paint as far as it could go. With that five thousand dollars, this is actually not paint, it's actually thermoplastic, it's the same stuff that we do the crosswalks out of, and it doesn't go very far, and it's super expensive. So we do have more green paint project, more green paint project, there's, how's that ever English? Coming up, so we do have another one coming up. We got some funding from YVCOG.
Do you have them?
Uh, these are along the Powerhouse Trail, so, one I think is on Fortyth, one is on Inglewood, and I can't remember where the other one is, I think.
Does the general public know what that means? I mean, the, the green paint? Or do, or should we do some kind of a educational...
Good idea.
...piece on that?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, the bike, biking public, or...
They know.
Biking, they know, right?
But the cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just add some additional visual cues. So we will be putting more crossings or other green paint in throughout the city in the future. Okay, so, once, this is kind of weird, I feel like I was doing my relationship backwards. So you're going to see, like, so this is living happily ever after, right? But then during the, during the marriage, or the time you have together, you're building something special, right? You're creating this nice, wonderful relationship, and this is North First, it's still underway. This is, happens to be I Street, and so Apollo Inc. got this, I think I might have shared some of this project with you already, but in case I haven't. So Apollo got this, we have a, a alphabet soup of funding for this project, most of it is fed, so the good news is, all that, that 9.4 is not TBD, which is what was originally going to fund this project. So we're currently ahead of schedule, we're hoping to have it paved, I Street paved by the end of April, so I think, you know, we should be getting the signals up around that same time. I'm still, I'm still going to say June, because that's the, on their schedule, although I think we can do it a little bit earlier. I'm, I'm hopeful of that.
Is I Street the one where Jack in the Box is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I haven't been able to go down that street for a long time.
Are you missing your Jack in the Box?
No, I take my dog to daycare, or that direction, but...
Actually, nobody's been able to go down I Street, actually. Me either. So, this one's underway, and it'll be finished this year. So, moving on, well, you know, we have to actually tie the knot, right? We have to go to construction, we have to make this thing work. So in 2025, these are currently the planned projects. Nob Hill Fair Avenue Signal, we already talked about that earlier at the public hearing. Thirty-Fourth Avenue Fruitvale Boulevard, that's under, underway right now, under construction. Division Avenue and Third Avenue Signal, this is Yakima Chiefs Hops, it's actually currently under construction, but we're in, we're waiting for the signal parts to come in, and those just take a long time. Looks like May, when we will be getting those. Seventy-Second Avenue and Washington Roundabout, that one is going to go this year as well. We are just, I, I think a month away, I think, from going to add. Systemic Ped Safety, this actually is our Fifth and D sidewalk project, we're putting some bull bouts there to shorten the distance for pedestrians traveling, or crossing there. This project was a direct result of the pedestrian data that we had received in our ped safety plan, which leads me right into the next project, which is our Ped, Systemic Ped Data Project, which we had last year, but we underspent it, and we're moving, and we had some extra money, so we were going to grab some more data, more ped data across the city this year as well, as well. In the interest of continuing alley pavers, I've got another one, that is, we actually went to add last year and awarded it, we just missed the window, the construction window, so, you know, once the plants open up, we'll start the north side alley paver. And then, the Natchez River Bridge Repair, this is the Trolley Bridge, in case you're wondering. So that picture is what the, the footing looks like, which is the reason that I had closed that bridge in the first place. So, moving on to Twenty-Six, we have Nob Hill Twenty-Eighth to Forty, so that's another mill and fill, just keep, keep...
My neighborhood, I'm going to forget.
There you go, just, yeah, find a different route. Eighty-Eighth Apple Valley Sidewalks, this is the east side of Eighty-Eighth, from Tyotin to Summit View, completing that sidewalk, the missing sidewalks there. And then, this is a smaller project, but it's another ped, ped-centric project, Nob Hill and South Eighteenth Street Intersection Improvement, so there's some ped work, there's some ADA stuff, and some new striping and markings as well. Oh, I almost forgot, Deputy Mayor, this is for you specifically, I'm singling you out. See that 10.8?
Yes.
That 10.8 is the amount of that construction for 2025. I currently have $200,000 of local funds, the rest of it is grants and other sort of things, that's 54 to one. I made it.
You did it.
I made it.
You did it.
I just thought I'd bring that. Now, it is only construction phase, so it's, there's a little bit of a caveat, but...
I challenged you.
You did. Okay, so of course we have to design Mr. Right, of way. So, we do have some projects in design, and we have an eighty, I-82 sewer line, this goes through the mill site, and this is going to connect the sewer lines, provide some, actually, hopefully it will be able to eliminate the Tamrac lift station at some point, when and if this is done. The Fred Meyer Active Transportation Pathway, better known as the Fortyth Avenue and Fruitvale Roundabout, so that one is currently under design as well. And then Sixth Avenue Reconstruction, which I'm hoping to bring the public comments and the public involvement process before you, I think the first week of May, I'm sorry, the first week of April.
That's right down the road.
And then we have to, in order to build Eighty-Eighth Avenue sideways, we have to design it, as well as the Nob Hill and South Eighteenth Street.
So you're going to have two roundabouts on Fruitvale?
Three.
Three?
That's right, you're going down on Sixteen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Already?
You're a roundabout guy.
Fruitvale and Roundabout.
Does things in a roundabout way.
You're a roundabout, you're a roundabout man.
I just had to use the same cheesy jokes, so...
You write your own material, do you?
Uh-huh.
Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Okay, so, not all projects, and not all relationships go according to plan, right? So I even have one. I have a relationship with a project that's very complicated. You know, we're on again, we're off again, sometimes it's working, things take longer, two steps forward, one step back, and so...
Those that are listening at home, he's here all night.
Yeah, right, yep, all night, all night. So this is literally my most complicated project that the city does. It's, it was here when I got here, and it'll probably be here when I'm not. But currently, we have four projects associated with it. We have Bravo Company Boulevard Underground Utilities, this is a utility project north of the tracks. We have Bravo Company Stage One, this is the roadway south of the tracks that connects into the county's east-west corridor. And we have Bravo Company Boulevard Stage Two, which is the roadway north of the tracks. And all three of those are designed and ready to go, we are continuing to work with the county and waiting NEPA for that project to move.
I was going to ask, when, when is that going to happen, the east-west corridor?
Yeah, it's...
Someday.
Yeah.
It's complicated.
And that's saying it nicely. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, I don't know. I would like to say that it's going to happen, but... And then finally, there is the, south of the tracks, we have the MSW site that the city is the PLP on, and so we have our cleanup and monitoring efforts that are associated with that. So I'm kind of juggling all three of those projects together. Now, what I would say is that, you know, from a transportation standpoint, I'm, I'm super committed to all of these transportation projects, right? But I'm not exclusive, I am seeing others.
Open relationship, wow.
So, yeah, it's, it's tough, it's, it's, it's hard to be monogamous with just transportation. So we have a lot of other...
Who let this guy in here, man?
I warned you.
Where's the hook?
Yeah, yeah. So, oh, man, I wish it looked, oh, no. All right, so, and, so I often talk about the other projects that, that the engineering office assists with, and this is kind of a very small list of it. So we got the Tiger Oil stuff, you know, Bike Ped, we help out with the pool on some of the admin side, and then our water and sewer departments, there's a couple of projects in there that we're assisting with the administrative functions of, and even on the maintenance side, this Nob Hill joint, uh, bridge joint repair, and then of course, our other outside facilities, like the Capitol Theater, the Convention Center, Harmon Center, and some of those kinds of things, and then more, 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 right? There's just, there is a lot of capital projects that happen in this city, not just from engineering, but from all of our public works and other facilities across the city. So, I think, that's, that's basically it, but before I take any questions, one last thing I'd like to ask is, this is a pretty big year for the city, there's a lot of transportation stuff going on, and we do ask for citizen patience, you know, and understanding, I mean, there's a little bit of pain, but I think in the long run, you know, a lot of these projects are going to, you know, have lasting benefits for the city, just like a relationship.
Yes.
There you go, I'm done. No more, no more, no more of that. I hope I'm done anyways.
Counsel, do you have any more questions or sarcastic comments?
I'll take them all.
There's a guy online that says fix the roads, and...
All the time.
All the time, so I think if you're watching, Fix the Roads guy, this is a, this is a good one for you to watch, so...
Don't miss this episode.
Yeah.
This was fun to put together, I will say that.
Thank you, Mr. Preston, we appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Hey, Bill, can I have that?
This?
Yes, you may. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a discussion regarding homeless issues and positive solutions, and our city attorney, Senator Watkins, is going to address counsel.
Okay, well, Bill's a hard act to follow, I don't have snacks, and...
Disappointing.
The theme of this is addressing homelessness, so...
It's real an uplifting...
I, I don't have, I don't have a real theme. So anyway, a few months ago, you asked for a number of, a study session with a number of things, and one of those things was examples of other places that are addressing housing for people experiencing homelessness. So this is just that piece, so we've come back with the 1406 and the 2163 piece, now we're coming back with this piece, because it's way too much to tackle in one meeting. So, here's the agenda for my short presentation, I'm going to review the data from the point of time again, just so you have it, and then we're going to talk about four communities, two of which some of you may have seen in a prior presentation, but the last two are completely new. So, here's the data that I provided last time, I'm going to try to provide this each time, just to remind us all of the count of people experiencing homelessness, as well as the count of people who are, list themselves as chronically homeless... uh of people experiencing homelessness, as well as the count of people who are, list themselves as chronically homeless, um, and whether they're in shelter or unsheltered. And um, here's just the top four reasons for both youth, uh, you know, has the age group, as well as the top four reasons cited for your information. So some of the things we talk about often are, are different kinds of housing, and this is mainly a housing presentation. So I wanted to provide the two HUD definitions just for reference, because I think sometimes we're not aware of the difference between permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. Um, permanent supportive housing is permanent housing, which also provides um supportive services, which are sometimes commonly referred to as wraparound services. Um, those services can assist the entire household um with, with uh lots of different, you know, opportunities for them. Whereas transitional housing is um a max two-year period, and um, and it's temporary housing with supportive services. So if you get into permanent supportive housing, you can have that housing until you choose to move. Um, transitional housing has more of a set time period. So here are the four communities um that we're gonna talk about in order. So the first one is Walla Walla, which you may be uh familiar with, because they have had their sleeping center since approximately the time that we've been talking about people experiencing homelessness. And we had the um camp across the street from the Zays Center before we had uh Camp Hope. So, the city of Walla Walla uh has Conestoga Huts. They um, they're currently thirty-seven on the property. It involved an initial investment from the city of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they laid the foundations. The huts actually existed in Eugene, Oregon, and were used prior to Walla Walla using them. And so they brought them up to Walla Walla and constructed them on the foundations that um the city paid for. They also uh were placed on city-owned property. As you can see, in twenty twenty-one, there was over sixteen thousand five hundred nights of care and two hundred and twenty-one separate individuals who took advantage of these Conestoga Huts. So, a little more information about the huts themselves, they're not super big. Uh, they don't have um heat, but they are weatherproof. And they have a lockable door, which uh provides privacy and also are weatherproof and have one window in the rear that provides some ventilation. So they're pretty small. They have a little kind of area in the front where people can sit outside. And so, how it works in Walla Walla is you can go in and get a hut assigned to you or a couple. It remains, that couples as long as they stay there five nights a week. Um, if they don't have huts available, what they've added since they initially put them in was um an area of overflow beds, and then people can stay there, and then if a hut opens up, they can then get on the list and move in. Um, the shelter community itself has, has grown. It now includes two additional buildings for office space and a common room, there are restrooms and showers. But they don't have a kitchen, um, and meals can be provided by local groups. They do provide hot water and coffee always. Um, their weather is a lot like ours, so in the winter, that is something that they do provide um twenty-four seven. And then it's staffed by volunteers. The volunteers work during the day, and then they hire security from ten PM to nine AM. And the volunteers do all of the work. They register the clients, they clean the bedding when people move out, they um, and they work, they volunteer through the Walla Walla Alliance for Housing. So that, it's all done by this nonprofit group.
So how is there, um, has that impacted the amount of homeless on the street then in Walla Walla? Or has it significantly impacted?
I'm not sure what the numbers are, but it seems to me, if you look at what they're doing with the Exit Homelessness Program, that they have some procedures in place to bring people into the Conestoga Huts and then transition them out into housing and a job. Um, but I can see if I can find the updated PIT numbers for Walla Walla County, and I'm not sure if they'll say exactly about this program, but it can give you the idea of how Walla Walla County's doing.
There's no power, there's no power in the huts?
No. Um-
So do they, um, do they have a limit on how much time a person can stay there?
I don't think so. Um, there are so few of them, and then they have this Exit Homelessness Program, which they almost immediately created when they brought the Conestoga Huts from Eugene. And it used to be in City Hall, actually, and it's basically a job resource and wraparound services for people who um, who can, who can do those things. And so it's an intensive program, it's geared towards each individual through nonprofits that work for them. So if you need to obtain an ID, they work with you on that. It works on reliability, job, um, job skills, they help prepare resumes. Um, they help with looking for jobs and housing as well. And it's uh staffed by social workers, peer support specialists, and again, the Walla Walla Alliance for Housing volunteers work on that too. So, up there is the mock-up of what the Conestoga Hut Shelter Community, their goal is. And on the right side is the Shelter Community as it exists. You can see all of the huts are kind of around in a circle. And then they have two kind of big buildings that they have the community room in. And then they run the Exit Homelessness Program out of there now instead of City Hall, so it's all in one location. Their goal is to add the transitional shelter component, where people can transition from the Conestoga Hut into a transitional housing unit of some sort. And then continue getting the support services and the job training. So it's the next step before they would exit from the facility altogether. So that's one option. It's kind of a one-stop shop. It's small. My guess is the PIT numbers in Walla Walla are lower than ours, but I will get them for you.
I mean, at least serve two hundred and twenty-one individuals.
Yeah, in a year, and sixteen thousand some nights. So if they're serving two hundred and twenty individuals and they only have thirty-seven Conestoga Huts, um, chances are those, a portion of those are exiting to housing. So, the next one you may have seen, and as you know, I'm from Wisconsin, so I, I love, I love this example for two reasons. Um, one, because it is the housing-first approach, but there's actually data since the last time I brought it forward to you to show that um their housing-first approach, which involves permanent supportive housing. It is not just handing over keys to an apartment and not checking up on people. Um, it's building housing with um services available. But they chose that philosophy in Milwaukee to address um unsheltered. And so between two thousand fifteen, when they started really pushing it, and two thousand twenty-three, they saw ninety-two percent decrease in their unsheltered population. Now, it has risen since then between two, twenty, you know, coming into twenty twenty-four. But I think it just is a good example of how providing people, um, providing people a roof over their head means that they don't have to worry about that, and they can worry about the next thing. And sometimes I think housing-first to some people might mean what I said, which is like, we'll just build a whole bunch of apartments, and we'll give everyone keys, and, and we'll just see how it goes. And Milwaukee's approach is different, because they did build, you know, specific housing. Like, this is a facility they built after deciding to go housing-first, and it's a permanent supportive housing building. They're twenty-four one-bedroom units. And um, it was for chronically homeless and those who suffer from chronic alcoholism. Which in Milwaukee is, was found to be one of the main issues associated with homelessness was alcoholism. It was less drug use at the time and more alcoholism. Um, so they have round-the-clock social services there um at the facility, and that includes mental health services around the clock, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And they found that that harm reduction strategy um lessened, you know, substance use and the other risks of being homeless. So I think that's an option.
Exactly, exactly what I envisioned that we need to do, is something like this.
And you can see, it's kind of, I, I put how much this twenty-four one-bedroom unit place cost. And it was, it was financed in part by a grant from Milwaukee County, um, money from the city, money from the, they have different names for things, but essentially money from the Milwaukee County Housing Division, a low-income housing tax credit, and um they financed part of it with a bank loan. And, and so, but they got good loan terms on it. And um, and uh it's, it's still functioning, so I think that that's, that's an option to think about.
So Sarah, is, do they come right away into the permanent supportive housing?
Yes.
So there's no shelter in between? They just come right into housing-first, permanent supportive housing?
Right, so if you're chronically homeless, so you might be in some sort of shelter. But it, you know, you get into, you somehow qualify, every state or city or county does it a little differently. But if you entered, like coordinated entry here, and there was a space available and you qualified, you could go. So you don't have to be in shelter ahead of time, you don't have to be literally sleeping on the street to get in either. But you have, they, they reserved it for chronically homeless individuals. Um, so with that, I'd just like to point out some other things that they did. They also asked people to donate money, but in kind of unique ways. Um, one of which is in the, in Milwaukee Airport, which I fly into, and um they do have this bin next to TSA, where you know, you're emptying all your pockets of all of your things. And they ask you to throw your change and your money in there, instead of putting it in the dish. So they're making some money that way to donate. Um, and then they also did a, a feature-length film, which I watched. Uh, it is very good, and it follows uh a number of men around who are chronically homeless. Some of them get into housing, some of them are in and out of housing, but they're very candid with the filmmakers, and it talks about how they interact with the justice system and how they're alcoholics. And how, you know, what they would like to see. And I just think it was really well done. It's on YouTube, you can just watch it whenever you want. But they also used it as a way to get the community involved. They had screenings. Community groups would show it and then offer forums to discuss it. So it's just a way to, a different method of outreach that I think was probably effective to get people to really feel like they had a better understanding of what was going on out on, on the streets, so.
And then they have parking meter, but we don't talk about parking.
I skipped right over that, you said that, right?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so, the city of Olympia has um three tiny home villages. So this is uh something that's been going on across the country, but Olympia's relatively close to home. And they fund three tiny home villages. One has fifty units, and they're all operated by some sort of five oh one C three. So the fifty-unit one, um, their mission of the five oh one C three is to support equitable access to safe, just and warm places. They also run a hotel program called Stability Stays, and it allows for hotel vouchers for people who have medical needs that require shelter to recover. Or if you have a confirmed date for treatment, they will give you a voucher for a hotel for the time that you need before you can get your treatment bed. And one of the things that we heard from our treatment providers and other forums is that there's this, this period of time in between people saying, yes, I want treatment, and actually getting a bed, where people are working hard to get to that treatment date without relapsing, but maybe are still homeless. So I thought that that was something that um we could think about as well. It doesn't accommodate a lot of people, because it's expensive, but um, that's one option. So, the two other villages, one is small-ish, it's twenty-nine units, and it is operated by a workforce development organization, uh, which is different than what I've typically seen. And they provide employment training to all of the people who are in that, that particular tiny home village. And um, so that includes basic work and skill development for residents, and they also provide case management for the other things that are going on in residents' lives. But it has a specific workforce development component that is specific to that particular tiny home village, as far as I could understand. And I thought that that was an interesting strategy. Um, and then the largest one that they have in Olympia is managed by Catholic Community Services. And um, and they work on coordinating medical care, which a lot of people experiencing homelessness need, and connecting individuals with services as well. So, in addition to those two, those three villages, they have a couple of other programs that work like hand-in-hand. And one is the Crisis Response Unit. It's a group of um people, it's an alternative to police response. And they'll respond to any person within the city that is in mental health distress, uh, has poverty issues, is unhoused, has substance use issues or resource needs. And they can, you can call nine-one-one, it's dispatched to the Crisis Response Unit. Um, and that unit goes out, it's not a, not a law enforcement unit, and tries to address those needs on the street before it becomes a law enforcement issue. And what's important about that is that it operates seven days a week, so every day of the week from seven AM to two AM, you can call that unit. And sometimes, um, and that, that's a lot of time to have that unit. And they also have a downtown walking unit that operates Tuesday through Saturday during the general day. So if they come across someone downtown, the walking unit can also um, can also interact with those people and see if they can help. Um, they also have a peer specialist program called Familiar Faces, which is an outreach program. That's their Monday through Friday program. That is in addition to the Crisis Response Unit. So you have peer um, peer specialists who are out talking to people experiencing homelessness and um trying to provide support, and a, a face that they can talk to has been through the same thing that they have.
How do they fund all this?
Well, I, I think they, they have the nonprofits run the tiny home villages. I think that the city of Olympia is providing a large amount of money for some of these programs compared to what we see in other cities. Um, but I can find out the exact amounts.
So the Crisis Response Unit, would that be something, at least it could be compared to our DCRs?
Yeah, it's kind of like DCRs, but with other people too. So you'd have, you'd have a DCR, but you also might have um someone who can provide other resources, like an EMT. So for basic like wound care or something, you might also have um a substance use treatment provider who has available beds that day. That could literally take them, if they said, no, I wanna get into treatment, and they could say, okay, come with me. So you'd have, it's almost like you have a walking, you can have a walking wraparound services group that would go out.
It's, it takes a lot of collaboration to do that.
Yeah. So the last part of Olympia's program is they have partnerships with a couple of local faith organizations. They have an ordinance that's similar to ours, which allows for um faith organizations, religious organizations to operate temporary emergency shelters. And so they have a couple of uh community faith organizations who have a small number of tiny homes on their properties. And the city uh provides funds for sanitation. If you sign up for that program, the faith organizations are responsible for um the construction, maintenance and operation of the temporary emergency shelters, um, as well as management. But the sanitation services are funded by the city of Olympia. So, last, is less of a model and more of something that I think is kind of an interesting change, is that the city of Spokane is moving their model to a scatter shelter model. So there are smaller shelters across the city, instead of one very large shelter, which um was near downtown. They had an audit in twenty twenty-four about their shelters, and the city decided after that audit to move towards a model that provides for smaller um scattered shelter sites rather than congregate shelters. And so their goal is to have smaller sites that have like twenty to thirty beds total. And they used some churches as a pilot project during the winter, like the churches would each have twenty to thirty beds throughout the city. And um, they think that different sites could specialize in different resources, kind of like the tiny home village that specialized in workforce skill development. And their model has a navigation center, so everyone goes into the navigation center, they assess their needs, and they can find the scattered shelter that works best for what they're looking for. Um, this obviously requires having a number of organizations who are willing to run shelter sites. And that can be challenging. But they think that it's gonna be more cost-effective and efficient, and it'll help people get into a steady environment and become part of the community, rather than be part of like a gigantic congregate living facility um in one area. So they would be in different neighborhoods and areas of town. And so they just launched this. They had a Housing Navigation Center uh launch in October to connect people with shelter. And the pilot project, out of the thirty-nine people, twenty-three exited to transitional housing. project, out of the 39 people, 23 exited to transitional housing. So their results are pretty good from their very short pilot project. Spokane has approved almost $4 million for the model from the city, and they closed the congregate shelter in November. So they're working on it. And I guess we'll have to wait and see how that all works out, but we're kind of monitoring it to see if that's a model that might work for other communities in the future. Unknown at this point. And then along with housing, I like to remind everyone of like the collaborative work that we're doing as a city, just for the community to know that council and staff participate in the Homeless Coalition, and a number of staff and council members were at the all-day meeting today, the kickoff to the next five-year plan. And so we're working on that. And and some of the other things that maybe we can think about doing include education campaigns and maybe some website additions. Some some city websites are very robust with information and would allow people to find resources that way. And so that's something that can be thought of as well. So that's it. That was a quick.
That was very informative. Thank you.
And I'll find out about the pit in Walla Walla and the cost of that and the cost in Olympia. I can see if I can pull up that information.
Yeah.
Olympia, I was interested in.
Reason why Salem got rid of the units after four years?
Eugene.
It was Eugene. I you know, I'm not sure. It could be a number of reasons. Maybe they wanted to go in a different direction, or maybe the nonprofit who had them was no longer operating one of their temporary sites. They have a number. They are more of a scattered model in Eugene. They have a number of tiny home villages and sanctioned encampments. And so if, you know, if the nonprofit was no longer going to run it that way, they were getting rid of them, or maybe they just thought it wasn't working for them.
Any other questions or comments, counsel?
No, I don't have one.
All right. Then we will move down to the next item, which is 9D, and information about the upcoming community outreach efforts on the Budget Committee, and our city manager, Vicki Baker, will present along with Mike Bailey, who I believe is going to be here by Zoom.
I think Mike is online. I'm going to kick it off, counsel. Tonight, I'm going to provide you a little bit more of an update on how we're dealing with our Budget Committee, our outreach efforts and our survey, and I won't talk long because I know it's getting late. First, I I would tell you with the outreach efforts, I've working with YVCOG. They have a outreach person who's full-time, trained, bilingual, and I have met with them and discussed with them doing outreach events in March and April so that we get a lot of information as far and wide as we can possibly get. I asked them to put together a list of possible events to go to so we can hit as many people during that time. So that's what's happening on the outreach side, and Randy is here to share the survey information and where we're at with that.
Good evening, council members. We've been working on a survey for the last few weeks. It's nearly complete, probably will be done within the next week or so. It only should take a few minutes to fill out. The survey is right in line with the council's priorities-based budgeting approach. Through a series of questions, survey takers will be able to share their feelings about which general fund programs and services they consider to be their highest priorities. They will also be asked if they would support higher taxes to pay for general fund services like police, fire, parks, streets. Conversely, survey takers will also be asked if, absent a tax, an increase in tax revenue, whether they are willing to have general fund services reduced or completely eliminated. Finally, survey takers will have the option to share demographic information, such as which council district they live in, et cetera. The survey will likely be open pretty soon. We remain open for about a month, and we will use the city's numerous telecommunications or communications platforms to get people to encourage people out in the community. And as as the city manager mentioned, also some outreach efforts to encourage people to fill out that survey.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. And I think Mike Bailey, are you there online and ready with your presentation? I would like to just say, well, first, I want to make sure he's there. Mike, are you there?
I'm here.
He's there. Okay, that's good. So I wanted to share in Veron has recently left the city, and so I was fortunate to convince Mike Bailey to be appointed as our interim finance director. So he is doing a dual job at the moment because he was retained just to do the Budget Committee. The good news is that he had worked closely with us through our budget last year and through, you know, trying to come up with this priority-based budget. So he's pretty familiar with what we do. And so it's a great fit for us in the short term. And he is here tonight to talk about that first Budget Committee meeting that we had and the presentation that we had for that. And there he is.
Yes, thank you. And it's not my plan to go through the presentation with the council. We wanted to share that as some of the information that you might find of interest as to what the committee's doing, especially some of the latter slides, what we talk about, what the longer-term plan is for the committee's work. We did have a meeting last week. We have another one already tomorrow afternoon. The committee will be meeting weekly, and their anticipated end date for their work is the end of April. They really have two objectives in this work. One is to become familiar with the city's financial circumstances in the context of what the city can do in with regard to state law, things of that sort, and provide just general feedback to the council with respect to alternatives that the council may want to consider for achieving financial stability. So so just general feedback about what they think about the various options that exist. Secondly, they're going to go through the priority-based budgeting effort and provide their feedback with respect to the prioritization of the city's programs. As you recall, priority-based budgeting is based on a stratification of the programs in the context of the various audiences, whether it be the community, which these folks represent, city staff, which you did get some information about what city staff thought the priorities were, and and other potential groups. We are now going to be able to achieve what we didn't have time to achieve last fall by having community members go through that exercise and give you feedback collectively as to what they think the the highest priorities of the city should be as you look at deciding what to provide additional funds for, what to continue to sustain, and potentially what needs to be reduced or eliminated based on what resources the city has available. So that's the committee's work. We wanted to share the presentation with you, just to give you a sense of of what that approach is looking like. Additionally, we were able to share some the notes from that first meeting with you as well that provides some additional insights. And as I said, I think it's a second to the last slide in the presentation that talks about the approach that the committee will use over these two-plus months in order to give you the feedback that we've identified as is their, you know, the object of their work. With that, as feedback about the committee's work, any questions or comments? Glad to respond.
Counsel, any questions?
No. Great. Excited.
They seemed engaged and ready to go.
Awesome.
That's very good. That is very good. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Anything else on this?
Are we going to get weekly updates like this?
Good question. I we will. Mike, if you're still there, we will be having notes for each meeting. The council, if they're interested in seeing the notes of the meetings.
Yes. That's my intention, is to provide just the notes to the meeting, and those notes are, you know, initially intended for the community participants themselves. Not everyone can attend every meeting, things of that nature, so we want to document their their journey and and provide that for their benefit, but we're glad to share it with you as well. And we may want to consider whether we want to share it with the community as well as as these folks are basically representing community interests and attempting to give the council this feedback.
Great idea. Thank you. Even if it's something that they put on the website as a weekly report or some kind.
We've done this kind of work with other cities, and that is a that is one of the approaches we can certainly take.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Questions or comments? Okay. Then we'll move down to item 9E, which is an ordinance amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code Section for Incentive Program for Water and Wastewater Connection Charges. And our city attorney, Sarah Watkins, is going to speak to us.
Okay, at a previous council meeting, city staff was directed to bring back changes to your municipal code 7.92, mostly because currently the 1406 money, the tax that is retained from the sales tax, that money currently goes into this city water and wastewater incentive program. The direction was to allow council and the city to utilize that funding as is outlined in the statute. So in front of you is a very small change to the incentive program, but it does allow the flexibility to use the 1406 sales tax that's retained for the incentive program or any other allowable use under the state statute. And the reason the change is so small, well, two reasons. First, in 2019, when the tax was adopted, the ordinance that adopted it already authorized the city council to use it for the three reasons that were outlined in the state statute. So that was already in your code. And so by changing the wording in 7.92 to allow you but not require you to put that money into the incentive program, you can use it for the incentive program, or you can use it for any other reason. The incentive program isn't allowed use under the state statute. So that's basically it. Any questions?
Questions? Any comments? All right.
I was just going to move to pass the ordinance.
Come right ahead. Would you like to read the ordinance, please?
This is an ordinance amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code Section 7.92.040 Incentive Program for Water and/or Wastewater Connection Charges.
I moved to pass the ordinance.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, a second by Councilman DCO, to pass the ordinance. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
DCO?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes. Vote is 7-0. Motion passes, and ordinance is passed. Thank you, counsel. Now we're moving down to item 9F. We're coming to the end here, folks. We're very close. It's an ordinance amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code for Office Hours, and our city manager, Vicki Baker, is going to address this.
Thank you, counsel. Yes, this will be very quick. It's a simple fix. In the code currently, it has specific hours of operation and that don't allow any flexibility for the city manager, given workforce issues and budget constraints. It's it's tying hands in making decisions, operational decisions. So this is just a request of the council to consider that I be able to make those decisions based on the conditions.
Yes. Sounds great. I was kind of shocked that you didn't have this ability to begin with. Looked at it and went, okay, sure.
Well, I just think with our budget constraints, it's a smart thing to do, to make the best use of our staff efficiency timelines. So if there's any further comments, if not, we'll have them read the ordinance.
This is an ordinance amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code Section 1.09.010 Office Hours Generally.
Mayor, I move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman DCO and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to pass the ordinance as read. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DCO?
Yes.
All right. Motion passed at 7-0. Ordinance is passed. Thank you, counsel. I had a city manager update. Do you have any further information?
It's been a night. I think I think we've covered it.
It has been. Okay, all right. That moves us to our last, excuse me, next to the last agenda item, which is other business. Does any city council person have other business this evening?
I do.
And Deputy Mayor Brown.
Okay, so I do. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting a reputation of other business. But I went to, as Sarah alluded to earlier, we went to the five-year homeless strategic plan aspect. One of the things that's in the in the previous plan that that's in this binder is showing all of the all of the things that were goals or objectives, and none of almost, I would say, probably 90% of them saying, no, they did not achieve. No, they did not achieve. No. And and the community feels that. Not not just this city, but all of the cities across Yakima County are feeling the same frustration. I sat in the government stakeholders group today, and it kind of felt like a big Debbie Downer session with a bunch of government folks, because we were all feeling pretty much the same way. We're all kind of frustrated. So I'm I'm kind of tired of dealing with going around the bush on trying to figure out how to make this system work better. I've sat on the county homeless coalition for pretty much all four years of my council time here. I've sat on the executive board, and we have not ever, as far as I can remember, actually vote on something to actually attack this plan. And I don't know. I mean, I'm just one voice on that executive board, and then there's the whole membership group. That's a whole nother segment of this. But I'm I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated with dealing with. I'm frustrated with wasting my time to show up to these things. I'm frustrated for having the community members waste their time to show up to these things. And so with that, I gave you guys kind of a resolution tonight. That isn't kind of. It is a resolution. It's a resolution expressing the city of Yakima's profound concerns regarding the performance and accountability of the Yakima County Homeless Coalition, and stating the city's intent to explore alternative strategies and if meaningful reform is not implemented. Basically, a vote of no confidence in the whole coalition, the whole coalition process and the executive process. And as I look at it, I put in here some immediate reform ideas, conduct a full independent audit of its finances and expenditures. What was also in here was in 2024, the county funded 7. almost 7.7 million dollars worth of projects inside the county in regards to the homeless response system, not meeting any of the attainable five-year metrics. So it was like, wow, look at all this money that we keep spending. And it's a two-year cycle, so that's almost $15 million over the next two years is going to be spent in the homeless response. So looking at all these things, implement clear performance benchmarks for for funded programs, establish greater transparency in decision-making and fund allocation, prioritize direct input from member cities that are most affected by homelessness. That's us. I don't feel like we get a huge voice, or any of the other cities do. Ensuring that local jurisdictions, not external service providers, have a stronger voice in funding and policy decisions. There's a ton of cities that make up our county. A lot of them have been trying to figure out how exactly to be more effective in this county coalition. And I'm just going to tell you, it's you need to prioritize the people that are the jurisdictions that are funding this. Produce and share performance outcomes from the la from the past three years to evaluate the effectiveness of current programs and strategies. Well, they did that for me today, because this is everything from the last five years, and nothing, I mean, I think there was one or two things in this five, the last five-year plan that actually was achieved.
So what happened to all that money?
Great question.
I have no idea. So anyway, so what I would like to do is pass this resolution, but before we pass it, is actually putting it on an agenda and having city staff make it formatted for city stuff, because I don't know the resolution numbers. I don't know any of that fun stuff. But so I do have a motion. All of that long-winded breath there, sorry. So I would move to direct staff to put on the next city council meeting a resolution expressing a vote of no confidence in the Yakima County Homeless Coalition, as drafted by me, a copy of which I will provide to the city clerk.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman DCO to put on the future business agenda item, a resolution expressing no confidence on the council's part about the homeless Yakima Homeless Coalition, once approved by staff, tweaked by staff, whatever it takes. whatever it takes. Anyway, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are we going to discuss it at all?
No, it's just going on the agenda. We'll discuss it at the meeting.
Yes.
Did you vote?
I didn't say anything, but I'll say yea.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brown.
And I'll.
I'm in total agreement with you. You need to know that.
I believe I have a copy.
Okay.
You have a copy?
I already did that. Great.
Any other business for the council this evening? Mr. Berg?
Try and keep it shorter than.
Sorry, I'm long-winded.
I had the opportunity to tour our city jail today, meet with Commander Davis. Very informative, a lot of good news, some not-so-good news. So I would like to direct staff to reach out to her, Commander Davis, so she can present to council about the current status of our jail at a study session in March or April. And then my second one, I've been kind of.
Can we do one at a time?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So second motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Berg and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to have our, Davis, what is her title?
Commander.
Commander Davis, thank you very much, from our jail, to present in a study session to council in the future the condition of our jail and circumstances there. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anywho, motion passes. Thank you. And you have another one?
I do. I was kind of reading through our proclamation policy, and I wanted to propose an amendment just for a discussion. So I would like to move to direct staff to draft an amendment requiring proclamations to have endorsements from at least three council members before we vote on them. I would like to place that on the next agenda for March 4th, that discussion.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Berg and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to.
Propose an amendment.
Propose an amendment at the next council meeting to make a change to the proclamation policy requiring proclamations to receive three council sponsors.
Before a vote.
Before a vote. Thank you very much. Okay. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
And that is it.
All right. Anybody else on council? Hearing none, I would understand the motion to adjourn.
I don't even know where the motions are.
It's right here.
Okay, great. Sorry. Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to our next city council regular meeting on March 4th at 5:30 p.m. here at City Hall.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman DCO to adjourn to our next regular council business meeting on March 4th, 2025, 5:30 p.m. here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, council, for hanging in here tonight. It was challenging, but it was very informative and lots of great discussion. We'll have more in the future.
Hey, thanks for a second.